Yeah.
Good.
What, is Rebecca ready?
Got it.
She just set up the... Yeah. I don't know where she went, but she did just... She's going around the long way. I'd like to open the November 20th, 2019 Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Tonight, we have John Stubbe, myself, Jason Norman, Kathy Franzen, Paul Haverty.
Barbara Carboni, K.P. Law.
And our Rebecca Oldman. So on the agenda tonight is the continuation of application 2019-3 for Seville Street, Groveland Realty and Trust LLC, Kara William Daley. Request a comprehensive permit pursuant to provision MGL 40B 20-23 and 760 CMR 56 to construct 192 apartment units in four residential buildings, a clubhouse with related amenities such as pool and associated accessways, sidewalks, parking utilities, and stormwater infrastructure located in the industrial zone district. And that's about the only thing on the agenda, so make a motion to continue to open that, reopen the public hearing. Second?
Second, dude.
All those in favor?
So what would you like to do first?
I believe you have some updates and if you want to just walk through.
I'd just like to start off and introduce myself and just try to bring everything full circle real quick. Bill Daley, Seven Hemlock Lane, Groveland. After the last meeting, I just, I wanted the engineers to put something together that kind of showed the project a little more clearly to get everyone a perspective because there was some misunderstandings of this might have been in a butt, which it is in a butt, but it's not a developed lot with the dumpsters and stuff. But I just wanted to, I think this helps clarify where things are. I mean, the first building's about 800 feet, last one's about 1,500 feet from Salem Street. Just to give everybody an idea where the water's going, where the ponds are for the project and hopefully to convey my vision really, when I bought the property, what I had in mind, you know, when, when the property was just raw, like how the buildings will be stepped in as the grade continues. And just to touch on the grade, you know, everyone's been out there, you know, we're bringing that, that level down, you know, 15, 20. Bringing more fill, we're doing that because we have to meet this grade all around the backside of the bowl. So that's, that's not just to build a mountain to put these buildings on, it's, it's a good grade that works all around. And like I said, the buildings will be stepped into the slope on the way up. The back of each building is 10 feet lower than the front until you get up to the main area. And, and that's really it. I just wanted the board to have a better understanding. You know, I think the last meeting, we were just a little all over the map. I just wanted to kind of rail it back in a little bit and, and show everyone. And we did make some changes too, since, you know, we heard the fire department's concerns. And even though we believe the three sides is sufficient in this type of project, we are able to get the four sides around all the buildings with, with fire apparatus. We've talked to the water department. We're going to plan the loop down Nelson Street for the water main, you know, as opposed to try to keep doing something on Sewell Street. So we hear the board's concerns, but I just wanted to go over myself instead of having other people try to talk for me and, and convey, you know, my perspective on the project. And, and I, I hope the, the drawing helped you guys understand where everything lays out because again, it's, it's a hundred scale also. So when you look at these little piles of, of snow storage, I mean, these little islands are almost half acres. These are massive, massive areas on a hundred scale drawing. So, I mean, these, these garage doors are over 100 feet from the road. So it's, it looks busy, but it's, you know, this, this is a 38-acre parcel. It's, it's really not, it's, it's not dense by any means. There's, there's a ton of room here, so. And it's hard to feel for that if you don't look at them every day, right? It's, you know, 40 scale, if these were 40 scale drawings, they'd, they'd be 100 pages. You would only get half of each building on each one, which is nice to read grades and stuff, but it doesn't give you the full effect. I, I think this helps and, you know, I just wanted to try to bring it all in. And I think my goal tonight is, you know, this is what I envisioned ever since I bought the property. And if we can agree or everyone's okay with the location of the buildings and the road, I, I know I am, I think it's the best for the, suits the property best, we're ready to go with, with full design. We did our test pits for the drainage yesterday. We have all that data. We're working on, on making all that work. That's going to take some time. And we'll put all rims and inverts to all the drainage structures and, and get all that work. And we also submitted a watershed plan on how we plan on, where we plan on shifting the water, so we're not sending to any, any sensitive areas. So maybe confusing if you don't look at them all the time. You know, basically, it's split right up here between the purple and the green. Everything's going, the green's going to that pond, everything up top in purple's going down to this pond. We do have a little after this point right here, when you start coming down the hill, we can't get to this pond anymore, so we'll have to have another one here. And we can even pick up the drainage on Nelson Street also. Just to give everyone an idea that we're not, we're not flooding anybody out or any one area, it's, it's pretty much distributed evenly throughout the site. It's all beautiful material, especially down here, this whole area, this area. We don't see any issues with, with meeting the stormwater requirements. So that's, that's really it. I think, I'm hoping it helped and that's, I just wanted to start the meeting off by, by saying that. And instead of getting, going all over the map talking about comp actors and, and stuff like that, I think that's, that's down the road and we're prepared. And those are the changes we made since the last meeting and, and that's it for me. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I promise I'm not up here to speak long tonight. I also want to apologize because I don't want you in my role.
Can you restate your name?
Oh, Joel Khan with Equity Alliance. I apologize.
Not a problem.
I want to apologize in a sense, I never want this board to think that when I suggest that we should put something down the road in an order, it's because I'm trying to either push off the importance of an issue that you may have or a concern. It's sometimes in trying to understand, as Bill has described, such a large site, it's, it's sort of a sequence and it's unfortunate that I leak out too much years of doing this where I take it presumptive to be and say we should follow this path. And I do apologize for that if at all I sounded inappropriate in my, my comments. I know tonight we're trying to accomplish, I think, a few things, or at least I hope so. I know that the sewer department is here to discuss sewer extension. We also brought back our traffic expert as well as I believe that Tech has theirs as well too, to review the last round of traffic information. And if we could, as part of that, we'd like Heather to come up. She has got some extra drawings to show you on sightlines and some other issues that might help you visualize and understand what she was looking at in the data. And then I, on top of that, I think that there, I think that Tech and our civil guys here, if we have time to continue any discussions in that regards. So I leave it to you, Mr. Chair, to decide how and which order you would like to go in tonight.
Can I ask a quick question? So it was also my understanding that we were going to address legal issues tonight about private ways? Is that still on your list?
I'd like to push off that if we could, only because we're just completing up some work. Jay can speak to that a little further.
We're, we've ordered the title, Jay Tallerman. We've ordered the title, so we expect to get you a more of a full opinion by, by the next time. We just don't have all the title documentation and the review quite yet.
Yeah, I had that sort of at the top of the schedule we had on today, so I...
Right, we got some documents. We then sent it out for, to ask a few more questions, just so we can close off the issue altogether. So we should have that back. We're reasonably confident it's going to be okay, but we just wanted to have a complete set of docs before we gave an opinion.
Do you think that might be by, let's say, the first meeting in December?
I don't see, that, that's my expectation. Obviously, we have the holiday in between, so.
I know, right, so that's why I'm just trying to schedule you sort of...
Hard to say. It's, our real estate group is doing the title work, not myself or Lisa per se, will review the final opinion. So I don't know, depending upon Thanksgiving commitments, but that's our hope.
Okay.
We're very close.
All right, thank you.
And before we start tonight, if it could be just one housekeeping issue I'd like to just bring up now before we forget, is that we have tentatively scheduled, because we had discussions about the first meeting in December, to discuss architectural. Our architect is from New Jersey, so when we sequence them up here, we, it's regarding other projects. At the moment, we have him, assuming your peer review consultant is ready to at least come up and have a discussion. And if you could let us know if that's the case, we could continue. If not, we can reschedule that. I just need to give him some advance notice.
We can discuss it a little bit later, but I will not be available on the fourth, so.
And I thought we sort of were going to push that one off a little bit until we got through some of the traffic in Civil, if I recall. We sort of did discuss the architectural proposal and we said, well, let's just wait until we sort of get through some of this stuff, but...
See how much we get through tonight and then we can figure out December.
Yeah, and then we can always adjust if the holidays get in the way accordingly. I just wanted to make you aware, we have an out-of-town guest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's go back to that, because...
Yes. Anything else we want to cover before we jump into the...
I just wanted to make sure that, because if we were going to discuss the legal issues, I wanted to sort of get that out of the way, but since we're not, just wait, see if we can get that. So what would you like to do first?
Yeah, I think we, given that we've already covered some of the traffic a little while ago, I think, and what I led in the peer reviews, do a, a review of the traffic first and then we can go back to Civil and finish up.
We have just a minute to present to you the drawing that would might be helpful if your peer review consultant goes on and talks about it.
For the traffic?
Yes.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Heather Monacup with Greenman Peterson, and we are the traffic engineers for the proposed project. If you recall, on October 2nd, we were here for our first ZBA hearing on traffic. We discussed the traffic study that was dated June 12th, and we also discussed the TEC review letter that was dated September 25th. We briefly went over those comments, myself and Sam. And after that, or since that meeting, we have responded formally to the TEC comments. Our letter was dated October 31st. So in that letter, I do have handouts for this. Would you like handouts? Perfect.
Sure.
Secretary. Anyway, so in that letter, we responded to a few things. First off was, most of the, most of the comments didn't need any responses, but there were a few that we wanted to address. And one was a sightline plan. There was some concern, looking left from the driveway, that vehicles parked, that are currently parked on, in the auto body shop would block sightlines. And we said, well, we feel that the cars are parking in the right-of-way. So we got a plan that showed the property lines and the right-of-way lines along Salem Street, and we drew the sightlines on those plans. So as you can see, the, the minimum sightlines are met. That's what's shown on the plan.
If you look here, in blue are our sightline triangles. So it's taken 14 and a half feet back at the driver's eye, and then the minimum sight distance is 279, traveling westbound, and 322, traveling eastbound. And you can see that the sightlines do not go over the adjacent property lines. So that's what this figure was trying to show in that response to comment letter. In addition, we provided a signal warrant analysis at, at this intersection, Salem Street and the site driveway and the AW Chesterton driveway. We did that under 2026 conditions. We had mentioned at the last meeting that it did not meet the warrants. It was formally submitted in our response to comment letter, and TEC has reviewed that, and, and I'll get to their comments in a minute. The other things that we talked about at the end of our response to comment letter was TEC's recommendation on a bus stop pad as well as a crosswalk across Salem Street. And in our response to comment letter, we just talked about how we would work with the town to get those, those items implemented. There were also about 13 comments, I believe, on the site plan from a traffic perspective of which Millennium Engineering did respond to since, since TEC's submitted their comment letter. One more thing I just wanted to mention was, at the last planning board hearing that I was not at, I heard that there was some concern about the vertical curve in the roadway west of the site. So I have another handout for that. So in a supplemental letter dated November 14th, we took a look at this exact, this issue that there was some, some concern about. When you're talking about a crosswalk in a roadway, you're not, you're not looking at intersection sight distance, which is what the, the previous plan that I showed, looking from the driveway, for a crosswalk, we're worried about stopping sight distance. So we want to make sure that a car approaching the crosswalk has added the time to stop to avoid a collision. So what we did was we looked at what the minimum sight distance is, stopping sight distance were needed for a crosswalk approximately in this area, which would be just east of the, of the site driveway. And as you can see, I don't, I don't think there were any concerns, you know, in, in the westbound direction. There's plenty of sight distance, no vertical curve, but as you can see, there's 500 feet available and we only need 280 feet. So the 280 feet is shown in the green and the available is shown extended further in the blue. It's to the west of the site that there was some concern, because there is a vertical curve in the roadway. And as you can see, we need a minimum of 325 feet in, in, in this direction approaching a crosswalk in the eastbound direction. However, we have 470 feet. So there is ample stopping sight distance for a crosswalk in that location to stop a vehicle if there was a pedestrian in the crosswalk.
May I ask a quick question?
Yep, absolutely.
I'm the one who had the concern about this vertical curve, right? So the 325 minimum, 325 feet minimum, does that, what, at what speed is that?
Oh, let me just check. It's the 85th percentile speed. I just don't know it off the top of my head, but I can definitely get that for you pretty quickly. Volumes, collisions, I think it was 38. Is it 41? Yes. In the eastbound direction is 41 miles per hour, and the posted speed limit is 35. So it's, it's meeting it for that 41 miles per hour. We put a, a tube out on the roadway to gather data for the three days that it was out there.
And you found, let's say, the average speed was 41?
The average speed was 38, and the 85th percentile speed was 41. And in the other direction, just to get it on the record, the average speed traveling westbound was 36 miles per hour and 38 miles per hour for the 85th percentile speed. So it is high...
Will you abide the speed limit?
Well...
Is that what you're saying?
Well, actually, the average speeds are pretty close. The average speeds are pretty close, but we always, whenever we're talking about stopping sight distance, we want to talk about 85th percentile speed. So that is what we looked at for these stopping sight distances. Another thing that I want to mention is that the, the crosswalks will have advanced warning signs for them, as, as most of them do, I've seen around town driving and whatnot. But those signs are even higher than a driver's eye. So as you're coming, you know, approaching the vertical curve and, and coming over it, you're going to see that sign well before you see the crosswalk, because that has to be a minimum of seven feet high to, for clearances, people walking by and things like that, so.
So does, I, just out of curiosity, so the, the crosswalk signs, I've seen some that sort of blink, like, hey, someone's in the crosswalk, or it's school crossing time, or whatever the case may be. So what, what would the signs look like, I guess?
I think we're going to work with the town on, is that correct? We're going to work with the town on what, on what they want to see out there. There's lots of different things that signs can do. They can blink, not blink, there can be buttons, there's all sorts of things.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
From a traffic standpoint, obviously, this is your expertise.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what, what do you, what have you seen in this type of...
I mean, with the advanced warning signs, I think that there's plenty of sight distance. I don't think you need to have a, a flashing beacon, but typically for something like this, you probably would put in what's called an RFB, which is a Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon, and that would be on, on both sides, you know, just mounted on the side of the road for it. That's, you know, typically on, on this kind of, I guess, situation that we're in. But the, but the sightlines are definitely met, you know? You might need something more for something, well, you wouldn't want to put a crosswalk if you couldn't meet these minimum distances, so it doesn't really matter.
But from a common sense standpoint, as a resident of Groveland, I've lived here for a long time. People speed up and down that road, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they're not used to a crosswalk there. So it's going to take some time to sort of train people, like, hey, watch out, there's going to be kids in the crosswalk.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that we, as a board, look at what's the safest way to approach that, especially in the beginning, until people sort of get used to the fact that there's a crosswalk here and there's maybe a large amount of children in the crosswalk, especially during school time.
Especially, you're the first day of school, exactly.
Right. And some of them have, you know, school crossing times and, you know, 7:00, 7:30, or whatever the time is, but just something that alerts people initially.
Right.
Because people don't even pay attention.
Right, well, that is one reason...
If they're used to it.
Exactly. And, I mean, it is, I know it's got a curve, but it's, it's relatively, it's got a vertical curve, but it's relatively straight, right? I mean, for the most part, so...
Right, but if you're flying over that hill...
Exactly, right.
And that, I see them do it all the time. That's why, because I drive that road every day.
Yeah.
And I see people just flying down, and I'm thinking, and every day I go by, I say, if there's a crosswalk here, are people going to stop?
Right.
I really don't think they're used to it.
Right.
It's going to take some training, I think.
And I would agree that we would definitely want to do the advanced warning. I mean, in some places, you don't see advanced warning, but this is a new crosswalk. It should meet MUTCD standards, so it should have the advanced signing, plus the yield markings, plus the, the signs at the crosswalk with the plaques, which were all recommended by TEC. Another thing that is always possible too, to get people used to it, is you can put those variable message board signs up somewhere saying, you know, new crosswalk ahead, and put it out for two weeks or something like that. It's relatively inexpensive and can alert to either it's coming, or it's there, or watch out ahead, you know? It can say whatever you want, so.
I'm just thinking, people have lived here 30 years, they just keep on going and don't even think about it.
Well, and that's another problem is, if, if you have a road that has too many crosswalks, people don't pay attention at all. So, you know, I think this would be a good location for one.
So I know you are, you guys are talking about a bus stop area. Where would that be in relation to where you're proposing the crosswalk?
I assume it would be adjacent to it, but...
Yeah, I could show you.
Thank you.
For the crosswalk. Close to the, between the street.
Oh, does he have...
Mr. Mike.
Is it on a drawing that you could show?
The location of the crosswalk is going to be to the east of Sewell and Commercial Drive, like across the street. So it'll be on this side, right over here. What we plan on doing, the sidewalk for the project, come down on that side of the road as well. So it's natural, just to bring the bus stop over to here on it. That also provides a little more distance from the vertical curve that you were talking about. And it could be problematic putting it on the other side of the road, based on the business that's going on there right now. So it'll be on the eastern side of the intersection.
Okay, thank you.
It will also have ADA compliant ramps and all that, so it'll have the, the bus pad, the waiting area, plus the, the, the crosswalk with the ADA ramps. It's already curbed on the north side of the roadway. It would have to be curbed on, for that small section where the, where the bus stop is, just to provide some protection. We did receive today a comment letter from TEC, and, I mean, in a nutshell, they're here to speak, but they're in, in agreement with, with everything that GPI has provided. They agree that there's no sightline easement needed from the Greenwood Auto Body. They agree that no signal is warranted at the site driveway. And they do agree from the supplemental letter that the stopping sight distances are met for the proposed crosswalk location. Some of my other notes, we just discussed about the, the pad having ADA ramps and the crosswalk and all that. We talked about the sign height. There were some other comments that TEC addressed from a letter that Millennium provided on the response to the traffic comments on the site plan. And even most of those comments have been addressed. There are some, I don't want to say outstanding, but signage, parking, et cetera, things like that. They just want to see the final plans before they are, you know, before they give their blessing on everything. But it seems like everything should be able to be accommodated in their comments, and I know that they're here tonight if, to talk about their letter as well.
And will you be here for a few more, in case there's any questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, do we want to have TEC come and review your comments?
Good evening. Sorry if anybody watching on TV. Good evening. My name's Sam Gregorio. I'm the senior traffic engineer at TEC and the reviewer for the traffic components of the, of site. Similar to what Heather said, we provided a letter that follows up on the response that GPI gave for the, for the site, and we are in general agreement in relation to the traffic components of the site. We agree that the sight distance for the crosswalk is sufficient for that speed of the road, and again, the 85th percentile speed, so even more than the posted. In agreement that the sightline over the auto body shop's property is not needed, the sightline at, inside the right-of-way is sufficient for that direction. And then, also in agreement, again, I think the only other thing we really commented on beyond was, again, for the, the bus stop and the, the crosswalk itself, which again, they've addressed as well. Obviously, we'd like to see that in the, the final site plan itself, but we know that the final site plans aren't currently submitted at this time, so.
But you agree with what they just presented for the crosswalk?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
In terms of the, obviously Pete from my office is also here. I've talked more about the site-related items, but in terms of traffic onsite, like again Heather had said, general agreement with most of the items, although they're waiting for more of the final plans, just to have that confirmation of, yes, everything is in there. Just a couple of things I wanted to note, and this doesn't mean that we were in disagreement, just more things to highlight. A couple of comments, requesting some, just more information regarding, I guess, agreement with the fire department and everything, their coordination with the fire department to make sure, again, that access to the sides of the buildings that the fire department wants, and make sure that the ladder truck can get through. Turning templates were provided, so on the final site plan, we would ask that those are just included in the final site plan package. And that the one item on there is that the, a definition of, definition of the truck that used is on the site plan, it's just to show that it was like the ladder truck. Not that we don't think it was, it was just, just for the town's purposes as well. And with that, a, a bunch, a lot of the comments together, kind of get wrapped up in me just saying that a final site plan with the signing and striping, repaving markings and all traffic signs onsite, just so we can confirm whether there's stop lines, stop lines on drive aisles, pedestrian signage in any of the crosswalks across the drive aisles, so both again on, off-site for the crosswalk across Salem, but also onsite.
Have you seen that?
Yes, there's, and there are some things that we've agreed with as part of our, our letter. There are some other items we just mentioned that switch this sign out for this sign instead. So not that the sign wasn't there, it's just that we prefer a different sign kind of thing. And then overall, with the, the only other, I guess, item that, again, we are in agreement that they are, they meet town standards in terms of parking, we just wanted to know... We just wanted to know if there was any other items that they could do on the site to bring actually the parking down just a little bit, only because of the size. And that doesn't mean that we're saying that they have to get rid of their parking. Some of the items that we were requesting, for instance, are something called bank parking. Basically, you provide the space for it's there, it's level, it could be easily constructed and parking if needed. But for right now, it would be just kind of like a grass space until needed. And that's just so, right now, there's a lot of parking spaces onsite. There's about 1.75 parking spaces per unit. Generally, that is over the zoning requirement. So it's just an idea to bring it back, although it is our opinion that they are in conformance with the town zoning by law. So it's really up to the town how they would want to see that. It's just TEC's recommendation to do, if there's any way to bring the total down more towards the zoning requirement instead, but they are in conformance. So, other than that, that's really it in terms of traffic. Again, a final set of site plans to just check the box on a lot of the traffic items, because that's really where TEC's position is currently in terms of traffic on the site plan. I know Pete will have other items in terms of the civil-related items for it. But again, I'm here for questions as well, if the board has any.
One question about, there was a comment about the Salem Street and School Street intersection, which is the one further down to the east, and just how busy that is. It was explicitly called out that it was designated a 2016 Highway Safety Improvement Program eligible intersection. Can you just give some context about what that designation actually, the significance of that?
Sure. An HSEP, Highway Safety Improvement Program eligible intersection means it's in the top 5% of crash locations in the Regional Planning Commission's boundaries. So, in 2016, which is the current era of eligibility, because right now, not all data is for 2017, not all data is for 2018, eventually gets compiled. So at the end, about middle of next year, 2017, will be a closed year, and then all the rankings will get updated again. So we would generally say that there should be a safety evaluation at an HSEP eligible location. What's different about this location compared to the other ones, though, is the intersection was just reconstructed, which basically means that all the crash data that would be available 2016, 2014, which is where that ranking comes from, that three-year period, is obsolete at this time. Because with the reconstruction, the intersection, all traffic patterns, even though theoretically it's the same alignment, the traffic patterns are different. We would consider them different, because there's new medians, the fact that it's just concrete and therefore differential where those medians are, the radiuses of the channelized lanes are all different. People drive the intersection differently. And therefore, we would wait, if we were doing a safety evaluation, we would wait for a full three years of complete data after construction completes. So this year, I believe, we've actually been the first one to actually have that. So we're, and by the time that's a complete dataset, we're talking now probably about 2024. So, our recommendation, I believe, far as was that we don't expect them to do a road safety audit, because there would be no good data actually start from for that.
Thank you.
The only question I had on the traffic flow was on the fire apparatus. I know the ladder truck they have now is pretty small. And I know, I don't know how much longer a dual-axle vehicle will make the turning radius, if it'll change it significantly or not. But I can see they're going to need a bigger ladder, probably around 100-foot stick, something like that, or ladder tower, whatever, you know, whatever name you call it. But I think you're going to have to have a bigger ladder.
Sure, and I believe that would be...
I know, I understand that's going to come under fire, but I'm talking about the traffic part, about the vehicle making the corners.
Sure, and based on at least the train templates that we have, and again, a lot of, I go back to our original comment about the final site plan to making sure that there's a depiction of the vehicle on there to show what was used, as what we've seen, assuming that it is the ladder truck that we saw on the, we would be in agreement that it could make the moves that it was showing. Whether or not, I know there was discussion going on about the four sides of the building as opposed to the three, and how now that will work as that changes the templates that were shown in the package. And then, actually, there was part of the package, one of the other comments that is in here. There's areas of, I guess we'll call them roadway extensions that aren't really roadway, but areas that the fire apparatus could move around in and turn around. One of the comments that we do have is, what actually is the material being used on that? It might be just grass, but what's the base material? Basically, can a fire truck go on there and not sink in? So, just profile information about that, which is, it's still a pretty standard thing that comes on site plan sometimes, so I'm not too worried. But just to have the documentation there that it's something that, again, a fire truck, for lack of a better word, won't basically sink into when it's on it. But again, I understand the concern of, and why is, one of the items we have in here is just to make sure that the truck being used is on the final site plan, and how that needs to compare to the current city ladder, the current town ladder truck. Or, for that matter, if the town, at some point, if they are getting a new truck, or if there's an expectation that a Haverhill truck might have to come in for any particular reason, if that's there, that might be a different sized truck, I'm not sure what Haverhill has off the top of my head, so.
I did have one last question. And I made a note about it and I can't find it. But, the basis, basically, is they used, for the turn signal analysis, they used, not the turn signal.
Turn signal.
I'm sorry, the signal analysis, they used like the 2026, I can't find my note about it, I'm sorry.
2026 build.
Thank you. Do you agree with that methodology, using that?
Actually, it's overly conservative. Typically, for a signal warrant, you try to find what would be the last possible condition to put in a traffic signal, because a traffic signal is interruption to the roadway. So, not to say that they did anything wrong, they actually did, actually more conservative, but a traffic signal warrant would usually be done in the existing year condition, even in if, again, if they would done their count in a peak month condition, we would actually tell them to lower the volumes to the average month from that case. Again, to make it, the last possible option is the traffic signal kind of condition. Conservatives actually show it's a condition where there's actually be more volume than what would actually be on an average roadway, an average today, and it still wasn't warranted. So, which is why we would say, in our agreement, that a traffic signal should not be put in in that location. And if a signal's not warranted, it shouldn't go in. And that's just to make sure that our location and intersection for control is the same here, as it is in Kansas, as it is in California, as it is everywhere. Because the worst thing we can do is violate driver expectancy. And if the signal really shouldn't be there, people will start abusing it the next one they see when it actually is warranted.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure you agreed with the method they were using, that's all. Thank you. You guys have any other questions? Right now? Want to move on to Civil? Unless you have any other comments?
I go, do you have any other responses, or?
I'm sorry? You want to do Sewer first, since the water department is here?
Yeah, yeah.
You okay with that, everybody? All right, Water? So, do you want to maybe tell us what you're thinking, and then we can have the water department comment? Somebody? Not me? No, thank you.
So, Bill Daley again. I've left one last thing out in my opening statement there. Basically, the natural heritage, the priority habitat, just wanted, I know we talked about peer review for that. My consultant wrote a letter regarding how the division works and how the program set up the conservation management permits and MISA checklist and stuff like that. And it's, all that's going to do is confuse someone if I pass out to all, it's just three pages of, you know, wetland scientist stuff. So, I don't, I already, we already have the conservation management permit from natural heritage that allows us this building envelope to work in as we donate back the, it's going to be, it's 12 acres already with the other 10-acre apostle, nine of the 10-acre apostle going to them, that's being amended now. So I have no problem peer reviewing the permit, like, if your peer review wants to look at the actual permit that was submitted with the application. But for the, like, the division, natural heritage and endangered species, they review the project, right? So they're the ones that give you the permit or deny you the land. So that's already been established. There's really, I don't, there's really no need to go down that road. Like I said, I already have the permit. Independent peer review isn't going to override the state agency, the governing agency of the habitat. So, with that said, I don't, like I said, I don't want to give you the three pages of...
We can talk about that after we get through the...
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted, I forgot to mention that earlier, I figured I'd get that off my chest. But anyway, so the sewer, after meeting with the water department a few times, and there's been a plan that Weston Sampson did back in 2015, the sewer main is down. Don't have the print with me. Actually, I don't have it here. I don't think I have it on the board, Brian. I wasn't prepared to bring it. I think we're okay. So it's down in the woods, everyone knows where Whitestone is, between Whitestone and behind the highway garage. So, we threw some inverts on, we showed that it could work, getting it out to Center Street. We've talked to Chesterton, they would like to see the sewer reach that area. But we've also dug test pits in this area for an onsite septic treatment plant. But we think, right now, it's with discussions with the water and sewer department, that moving forward, bringing that sewer main out from behind Whitestone would be good for Collegiate Park, all those streets, and, you know, and even Chesterton, and getting it up there. So, discussion's moving forward. It's a big undertaking, but it's, you know, at the end of the day, it's probably the same as a treatment plant, and I think the town can benefit substantially from it. You know, I know there might be concerns brought up about, oh, everything's going to get developed now, but if you look, there's nothing along that route. It's already built out. If anything, it's just going to help all those people on Collegiate Park with their septic. They're on small quarter-acre lots. You know, they can do in-law apartments, they could do in-ground pools, they don't have to worry about fixing their septic's anymore. And most importantly, I mean, Chesterton, right, Chesterton, and we're trying to figure out, I'm trying to get sewer information from them, because they have multiple septic systems. They have issues every week over there, there's pump trucks. So they're very interested, and I think it's doable. I met with the water department last Monday, been back and forth, Millennium has been working on it. It's a rough draft, there were a couple options, a couple different routes to go. It's been in, I've been in town since 2000, and it's been talked about since then, you know, getting that sewer main out of there. So, I, you know, we're prepared to design it and build it, is, you know, and just start to talk. So that's really all I have to say, I know the water department's here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Colin Stokes and the Water and Sewer, so we've met numerous times with Bill Daley and the water commissioners who are unavailable tonight with some scheduling conflicts. They're in full support of Bill bringing the sewer line across town. We've looked at a couple of different routes, and what it boils down to is, as long as it's deep enough, both routes appeared that they, that Bill can show us that he can get the depth required for future expansion. That coincides with our master plan for sewer expansion. So the board is, my board is on board with Bill doing it, and they just want to make sure that the depths are there for future expansion.
What is the required depth?
Deep.
Sorry.
Yeah, no.
Put you on the spot. Right. Right, that's why I'm trying to figure out what are they saying the required depths are.
Yeah, so, he gave us some rims and inverts that followed our master plan, and he showed that he could do, he could get it through Center Street, through the highway yard. There is another option that's a little bit further up Center Street that comes through, that would come through where Millennium Plastics is. There's already a sewer easement on that property. Going that route would allow further distance away from wetlands that are kind of border of the highway yard. So we're just kind of talking to him about which route's going to be best and, you know, for future expansion across School Street into Pandora. Picking up Chesterton would be big for us. You know, that's the biggest industry in town with multiple septic systems that are on top of the aquifer, so having them get on sewer would be of huge benefit for the town.
So, providing all goes as planned, right? Because we know it doesn't, right? But ideally, how long would a project like that take to take it from where it is now to supply this project?
That would be up to Mr. Daley, and when he starts digging holes.
What's your process, how long would it take to review plan, design plan, and what do you think it would take?
I mean, we would need plans. We don't have those yet.
I think three years.
Three years? From inception all the way to?
It would probably be done quicker, but I don't think I need it between now and two and a half, three years.
And as far as the actual construction?
That would be on Bill. It will not be on the water department.
I'm just curious how long it takes and how much disruption you need, and do you need permission from property owners along the way? Are there easements available? Are there any hiccups, I think?
There would be, you know, permitting, obviously. He's digging on the road, he needs road access permits. Coming across the town-owned land, he would need permission from the town with the easement. We would need to secure an easement across the national grid power lines. Currently, the sewer is on the other side, on the Whitestone Village side. It's been tried before, but every project that was going to require it fell apart before the easement was secured. So, it's just legwork to get all that done, but...
And what they could bring over would be more than sufficient to handle the project that they're proposing?
Yeah.
And is there a limit, let's say, on how many units that would be able to?
It would have to, you know, what he's proposing, plus additional that's coming in from future expansion.
So the 192 units plus, let's say, whatever it is, a certain percentage over that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that was very helpful.
I have a question. No, I think I read in one of the letters that, are they going to use some of the existing sewers, or are they just going to go parallel to the existing sewers?
They would be tying into sewer that was extended when Whitestone Phase II was put in. People who built Whitestone extended the sewer up further, parallel with the power lines. So right now, it ends basically behind the new horse farm that just got built on Center Street. It would get, the proposed tie-in spot would be a little bit further back around Ann Street? Is that right, Bill?
Yeah, so, the ideal spot was behind the stables, right? But obviously, that, you know, with the construction now that's done over there, you know, it would have been okay anytime up until, you know, two months ago. It's just, you know, and that's, and the pipe was extended there. It's actually the same amount of footage, and that's kind of how we determined what the pipe, how deep a pipe would be on Salem Street, because it's already predetermined where it is behind Whitestone. So if we continued through the stables, I knew what that invert would be on Center Street where it came out. So that's how I got the right elevation coming the other route. There's multiple routes on the master plan. It's unfortunate that that didn't get used, because now that pipe will never be used, really. You can pick up everything else going the other way, Pandora, and so, you know, a few hundred feet of pipe got installed that won't be used. But it could have, and it was put in so long ago that, you know, it's, like I said, it's unfortunate that it didn't get used, but, and that was the way to go. But it's the same amount of pipe, it's the same invert when you get out to Center Street. And just to reiterate, probably a two-year process for the sewer, I'm thinking, you know. Actual work, that, it's about 5,000 feet of main and a couple dozen manholes, five, six months for actual construction, you know.
And so, providing, on the route that you're proposing, how many houses do you think or?
I think it's 40 homes.
That you could supply along the way?
Yeah, we would, you know, we'd be...
In addition to Chesterton?
We'd put a stub to the property line, correct. And they could tie in whenever. We would use, I don't know if it's Harvard-Yale and then Murray. So, we'd come up Murray, and then that's how Chesterton, Chesterton would get hit off of Murray. At the 90 of Murray, it would go into Chesterton at the low point there, and then come up Murray, down Salem, up into Sewell.
Right there on the map, right? I just want, if you...
Yep, Murray's right here.
So Murray's right there, right?
So it'll come like this, you know, out by the highway yard, down center. I think that's Harvard, I'm not sure, I think it's Harvard.
Yeah.
Then come up Harvard, Murray, and then up Murray right here.
Yep.
And like I said, you know, that area's already developed, there's nothing, you know, it's not like Amazon's going to come because there's sewer over on Yale, you know, it's not happening. So it's just going to benefit those people, all the people. And then the schools over there too, Bagnell, I mean, that's, it just opens everything up, it really does. It's going to let Pandora revisit the sewer main extension, because there's a lot of costs associated with getting it out from where it is. It's in the middle of the woods. Some people think, oh, it's in the woods, it's easier. It's not, it's harder to work in the woods. It's a lot easier to work on the street, you know. But we got ideas for that too, because of the sensitive areas that are down there and stuff with the wetlands and natural heritage, so there's a lot of options. And like Colin said, we're going to revamp, we're going to move it on to one side after some comments from Colin and Colin, you know, here and there, behind the scenes, kind of...
Yeah, so he was alluding to the fact that there was a route that was more advantageous to the town based on wetlands, right? So is that the route you're proposing now?
Well, I use the route that kind of hug a property line, only because we don't know what's going on at Strawberry Fields, and the last thing you want to do is put a sewer main in the middle of Apostle, right? And then, oh my God, now we can't, you know, you don't want to design around that, you know, you want to have a good idea now of what's going to... So typically, you put things near property lines, because nothing's ever going to be built there, and it's there. But yeah, would it be easy coming through that easement that's already in place from 2005? Yeah, it would be, but like I said, but then you're going to come out into the property some more, so it's, you know, is it easy for me? Yes, but the other thing was kind of the right thing to do, you know, keep it by the property line, because, you know, in 10 years, I don't want to try to explain why I did it, you know, it's in the way of...
I'll hold the other pipe.
Yeah.
This is why I want you to explain it now, Bill.
Yep, just hold.
So you don't have to do it 10 years from now?
As much as I can talk to you, there's this part there. So this was a plan done by Weston and Sampson, actually Bruce Adams, I think, in 2015. These are all, these are all the options that were available to the town. So just so you know, the project's right here. Right here's Nelson and Sewell. Here's Uptec. This is Murray. Cheston's right here. It's tough to see, but this is Collegiate Park. This is the stable building I was just referring to. The main is to this point right here. This is Whitestone. This is the rail trail. This was the preferred route up until, you know, the stables were developed. So it's, you know, he's all paved, and then now it's not feasible there. But where this pipe would come out to this point, we could still match that invert with this light green roof. As you can see, it comes over here. We proposed to hug the property line, this goes through a big hill here, which, there's no reason for that. So we're going to go from this manhole. This has to stay, because that's an easement. We're just going to kind of cut that corner off, come down straight, and then over. But after, you know, some recent conversations, it may, people may want to see it come this way. This is the engineering firm, plastics engineering, with the easement right here, and this is the highway yard. So I was just concerned on doing that, and the gun range is right here, so you're going to be out here with that, kind of, but I guess this is all being CR to DFW for some, you know, it's part of an ongoing thing, so it really doesn't matter at this point, it'll be restricted area anyway. So we're going to, tomorrow or Friday, we'll just move these manholes to this side. Basically, this line's just going to be this way.
Okay.
No, it's just going to flip, mirror.
Take that 90, is that 90 coming out of it, Bill?
Yeah, that's a 90, yep, yep.
Is that coming out of it when you switch?
Yeah, I probably just get it right from here and cut right through, yeah, yep. I mean, there's plenty of pitch in here, there's more than enough depth, and this is pretty sensitive area, I mean, this is the stream. It's not a crazy flow, it's not, you know, there's a, you could easily do it with open, we could actually directional drill it to limit the, any type of contamination with soils and mud and all that. Sometimes people like to see that, you know, in a sensitive area. You can just drill a pit here and a pit here, and you drill the pipe, but you need pitch with that, you can't get that perfect, but we have that too, so that option's available. And then, once we get to here, you know, the main, if we come out this way, the main will be here at Harvard. And then this is all Pandora. It's just, it opens it all up, it's just, you just got to get out of the woods. It's been sitting there, and Bagnell's right here, so there's a lot of options once it comes out of the woods. And you can see all the lots in Collegiate Park. You know, as it is right now, these people probably end up with some pump, septic system, pump systems right now if they were to sell their home, or if they had a failure. So it's really going to help them out, and that's it. But then here's, that's where Cheston's would be, they have a little easement right here at the 90 degree turn on Murray, so we'll come right up and up Sewell, so...
That'll be cost effective for you too, if you guys put that in?
Yeah, I've already got numbers from some of the big sewer contractors, I don't know if, I might do it myself, but I don't know. I've got enough work, so...
Public kind of partnership that would be done, installed in the private coordination with, to get the work done.
And Colin, based on what Bill just presented, are you in agreement that that route that he's proposing works for you, or for the town, water department?
Yeah, right now, it works. Once he shows us the inverts and shows that we can, you know, stick to the master plan, just like the first one he presented to us, as long as the one that goes through Millennium Plastics can do the same thing, the board, my board is okay with it.
So basically, these manholes that will be flipped over, the inverse, the invert, no matter where it is, right? If it's flowing at 1%, it's, you know, if it's elevation 21 here, there's going to be elevation 21 here. It's just the rim is going to change, the top of the structure. But it's all pretty much flat in there. And this isn't really accurate anymore because of the gun range, so this looks like this was a big hill that's been leveled now. So it's, there'll definitely still be some onsite survey, on-ground survey before it takes shape to make sure, because like I said, it's been some work out there, but, and that's really the only other route now that this is gone. This isn't necessary, and this will, that will fulfill everything that this master plan is trying to do back in 15, so...
Is that a gravity system, Bill?
All gravity, yep. Yeah, it's pretty deep, it's, you know, I think it's 20 feet deep right here, but that's because of the railroad bed, right? So it's not bad, you're 13 feet the whole way, and you have a lot to make up here, these are dropped manholes, because there's a big bump in the road, so you're 11, 12 feet deep the whole way, which is overkill, in my opinion. These houses are all up high too, it's no problem picking anyone up, all their basements, whatever they have. So, you know, as it gets closer, obviously, we have to shoot all the sills and figure out where people are, and make sure everyone can hit it, but I'm confident, yeah, I mean, they're all up high, and like I said, this manhole and this manhole are both drops, so if anything needs to be corrected, you have multiple feet in there, I think there's eight feet to play with there, so it's a big bump, I don't know if you probably know it, so, okay?
Thank you.
Am I done, Owen?
Yes. Anything we missed that you haven't walked off? Do you guys have any other questions for Colin? I'm sure he'd like to go home, I'm just guessing. He's not used to late nights, I'm sure, like us.
I just have a couple other things.
Oh, yes, please.
Nothing groundbreaking, but in our talks with Bill, we had talked about the loop, and he mentioned it earlier, how he's going to change it to be on Nelson and Sewell. We would like, like a calculation based on the buildings you're putting in for expected water usage. We're going to need that. I was on-site when you did the fire flow test. You should have plenty of volume. We had talked about the potential for your pumps in the buildings, rather, air on the side of caution. But other than that, we don't really have any questions at this time, but...
Great.
All I got.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colin.
For coming down.
That it?
Do you have a question?
Yes. Yes. Well, I just wasn't sure if we had any other questions specifically on, for them, before we...
I think I'm out of questions for now. Shocking, I know.
Introduce some public comment on...
Debbie Webster, 45 Wood Street. Where typically when we extend sewer, it's a town project that the town undertakes, and betterments are usually charged to anyone who the line has run before. I believe this project is probably going to be mainly paid by the developer and possibly Chesterton, so the town will not have any say on whether or not the line gets extended. But he did indicate the 40 homes may be able to tie into it, so I guess my question would be, would the homes be charged a betterment fee as a kind of a reimbursement of the developer's cost to be able to hook in? Because normally, that's what happens when the town does it itself. Once the line is completed and done, will the entire line be given or ownership to the town? So the town will have any future control over the sewer line once it's completed? And just so that people know, there's usually two charges that happen when you hook up to sewer. One being the betterment, if one's going to be charged. Number two is the connection charge, which typically the sewer department charges when someone does hook in. And what, an interesting part of the law is, is if a sewer line does run along your property, you have to hook in if your septic system fails. You don't have a choice in the matter. So you would be subject to that connection charge. I mean, some people would be happy to do that, because as everyone knows, a septic tank can be problematic, especially if you're not used to having one. So I guess my major questions are, the 40 homes that are going to be immediately impacted by the line, will they have any financial costs involved in that? If they do, how much? And will the line be owned by the town once it's done? And what, I guess for Colin, is if this were to happen, you know, today, because who knows what the fees will be, is what is the connection fee to hook up the sewer if there is no betterment? Thank you.
So, we haven't really got that far into the discussion, but I would venture a guess that if the town is not fronting the money for the project, we can't charge a homeowner a betterment for something that we didn't pay for. The tie-in fee, off the top of my head, it's like maybe around $4,000. That, I would imagine, they would still have to pay, but that, I would have to talk to my board about, that's something the board would have to talk about. Inevitably, I believe that Bill would have to turn the sewer main over to the town, and it would become town-owned. Those tie-in fees are how we pay for maintaining the stuff, so if no one's paying the tie-in fee, the money's got to come from somewhere. So I would say that the houses, they're still getting a great deal. You know, if we funded the project, maybe it's $30,000 a house, plus a $4,000 tie-in fee, they're in it for $34,000. If it happens this way, and they have to pay $4,000 instead of 34, or putting in a new septic, I think they're getting a great deal. But none of that has really been talked about, and that's just kind of, like, off the top.
And I'm guessing the developer doesn't want to keep it after that, because he doesn't want to maintain it either, right?
No, I don't.
I didn't think so. You don't want that 2:00 AM call that is backed up? Yeah, I...
But it'll be done to the town straight, Bill, like what everything else is.
And I'm not looking to charge every homeowner once they look in, I don't, you know, I mean, that's all, you can, Bill, Colin, and them on what they need down the road, and then I don't, that's not my base, on bringing the sewer out there, on the common houses, I'm not going to get, you know, 15 grand back from each one of them, you know, this is, you know, it's a win-win in my opinion.
Check with Paul and Barbara and see if you have any comments on the private work versus...
Sure. Barbara Carbone, KP Law, Town Council. So, it's complicated, and I don't think I have any particular answers. I'd like to talk to council about this and see what their thoughts are down the line, because I'm not sure I necessarily agree that the town can't charge the betterment, and that the tie-in fees are necessarily going exclusively and directly to the developer, so I think something I'd like to talk about with council.
We couldn't charge, the town couldn't charge a betterment fee, because it has to be tied to the cost of the construction of the system. So there could be, there are other betterments that could potentially be charged, but overwhelmingly likely that it'll be just a connection fee from the roadway. Every property owner who would front in front of capacity provided that would have the right to connect, whether they'd be compelled to connect would be more of a local decision. But they would absolutely have the right, that's how we go, and we wouldn't own it beyond this, otherwise, there'd be a whole bunch of easements and town meeting actions, which I don't think anyone wants to go through. So we'd be constructing it under a license to get into the roadways and do it, and then turn over the whole system, so...
We'll have the toll fee also.
Yeah, yeah, and we can't, we couldn't charge users fees, that would be a private system, we're not going to operate a private system on municipal property. Again, town meeting would have a say in that, we have no interest in doing that, this is to serve, this wants to connect along the way, those 40 properties, however the town wants us to design, that would be fine. If the town wants to try some creative financing, or some kind of benefit if there is any additional infrastructure that they would have to construct to get from stub to property, that's, I suppose you could get really creative, but overwhelmingly likely, it's just going to be a connection fee, because we're going to take it right up to the property line with this stub.
So again, I think that's just something for further discussion, because there are some unknowns, and just to the extent the applicant is asking for, and may obtain a lot of relief from the board in certain areas, I think it should be the subject of an ongoing conversation, and not an assumption that, you know, all bets are off. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do have one question for Colin, actually. So, back to Ms. Webster's point about, if the sewer is brought in, let's say, to Harvard, Yale, that area, would they be obliged to connect if the sewer line abuts their property?
The only, sorry.
No, that's all right, so if their septic fails?
If your septic fails and sewer is in front of your house, you have to hook up to the sewer.
So, but you would be looking at, let's say, a $4,000 fee versus 30 plus for a new septic system?
Whatever a new septic costs, yeah.
Right, okay.
So, still in the homeowner's favor to hook up the sewer.
It'd be cheaper.
Yeah, I, no, I agree with, I just wanted to make sure that we answered her question.
But if your septic is fine, there's no obligation to hook up to it, I don't know why you wouldn't want to. If your septic fails, I mean, it's the better option.
But they would be obliged, that's the question, so that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Anything else?
Years ago, when they ran the sewer down Parker Road and Rolling Hills, Rolling Acres or whatever it was called, we only had so many years before we had to all tie in. It was a two or a three-year deal, and then you had to tie in after that. It wasn't whether or not it failed. Now, they may have changed the rules, I mean, I'm talking 40 years ago, so, but...
Ultimately, that's going to be an issue that's sort of outside the purview of the board.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, who cares?
The sewer commissioner's purview.
Yeah, that's the...
I agree.
As to who is required to tie in.
Yep.
I think it's a great thing if this project can actually make sewer available to these homeowners at a greatly reduced cost.
I agree, it's not really our purview, I was just trying to get a grasp from my perspective, what benefit is it to the town, and to the residents of the town? So I'm trying to just figure that out. Whoever charges a fee, I don't know, that has nothing to do with me, I'm just sort of curious how it would lay out, that's all. Just trying to get the big picture.
Any other comments on...
Want to talk about several? Want to talk about several?
You want to go with the civils?
Sure.
Only eat forty, so.
Before we start, just a, a comment that in my review and the peer review letter today, it was unfortunate that the last submittal that was given to the board in response to our last meeting, the last peer review, that the peer review consultant tech did not have a chance at least to include that in the report. And they could comment on whether they have an opportunity to review the plan and how we can go through some of the issues, I think, that are in there.
Yeah, sure.
Good evening. Peter Ellison, I'm the Civil Engineering Peer Reviewer from TEC. I think to summarize my letter, my response letter dated November nineteenth, most of the comments that I have are somewhat detail-oriented, and the level of detail that the plans are at right now are closer to what I would consider conceptual. So I'm looking for more detail on the plans. You can see in the applicant's responses that the intent is there to address my comments on those issues. So I think they are working towards that, but I can't sign off on, on these comments until I receive those detailed plans based on my conversations with Brian from, from Millennium, the applicant's engineer. I think the, you know, the intent is there to come forward with more detailed plans in the near future. That being said, I don't know if you want me to get into very detail, go through each comment, but I guess I would open it up to the board and see if you have any specific questions about my comments, and we can get into, get into it that way.
I would sort of like to go through them, if you don't mind, just so that we, everything's on the record, everything, because people at home don't obviously get copies of this, so I just sort of want to make sure that we at least touch upon the issues and just have a quick summary if, if needed.
Yep.
But some of the comments, I noticed you've closed out the comments, so we don't have to spend too much time on those, but I know there's some that definitely warrant longer discussion, so we can make the comment close quick, ones quick.
All right, sounds good. Comments one through ten are related to the list of waivers. Comment number one is informational only, has to do with that the use is not permitted, but they're, you know, requesting a waiver from that requirement. I, I guess going forward, I would, I would expect, because some of these first ten comments do have recommendations from TEC built into them, I would like to see some type of response to them. Comment number two, requesting a waiver to allow a minimum side yard setback of twenty feet where the minimum requirement is twenty-five feet. And then in this comment also, the question is, if Nelson provides legal frontage, would that be considered a front yard setback off of Nelson Street right of way, which would be fifty feet? I think either way, they're going to request a waiver from that setback, but it's important to document it in the letter. Number three relates to the building height, and they're requesting a waiver to go to sixty-five feet where thirty-five feet is allowed. Number four, loading areas, they're, they're requesting a waiver from this requirement because the project is, the, the loading requirements are for an industrial use and this is, this is residential, obviously. That being said, we did recommend that they provide additional loading areas on the plans, so we would expect to see that on the plans come forward. Number five has to do with the affordable housing component, so that, that's an informational comment. Number six has to do with the requirements in Section ten point three for the planned unit development, which they are, they're requesting a waiver from. There are several issues in ten point three that have to do with public safety that TEC will review separate from those requirements anyways, so. Number seven, we request that they submit concept plans for the proposed signage so that the board can review it. Number eight, waiver from site plan review. Obviously, this is a comprehensive permit application, so site plan review doesn't typically, doesn't exactly apply, although they're going through a very similar process to what we do for site plan review at the planning board anyways. Comment number nine, requesting a waiver from town of Grove and Wetland Protection bylaws. Those are local bylaws where they, they are only required technically to meet the state bylaw. They, I understand they'll be in front of the Conservation Commission for review for that as well.
Can I interrupt on that?
Yeah.
I, I always recommend that boards not grant blanket waivers of bylaws, including wetlands bylaws, stormwater, things of that nature. It's important, not only for the board, but also for the protection of the applicant because if the board is granting waivers that is not actually aware of, that's going to make your decision vulnerable to an appeal. So I think that you should be aware of the exact nature of the waivers that you would be, you know, that are being granted for this project. So I would like to see the specifics on whatever provisions of the wetlands bylaw need to be waived.
Right, I was going to pipe up with the same comment, and that would apply to the Board of Health regulations as well. The board should ask for a list of specific waivers that it's seeking, the wetlands protection. And then, this is also just a time for the board to consider input from the Board, the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission with respect to those waivers that are requested. So I don't know where with getting comments from those boards, but this would be a time, I think, once we get the list of waivers from applicants or applicant's counsel, then those boards could review the waiver requests and provide this board with advice.
So, I just want to make sure, I, so, you think the applicant should revise their list of waivers based on what you, what, on your comments that you just made now, right? So they need to be more specific about what it is they were asking for, for waivers?
Correct.
Which I agree, yeah.
Yeah, there should be a list of specific waivers which the applicant can provide of each waiver that they're requesting.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'd like to see that too because that definitely jumped out at me, like you just can't waive everything. Like you have to, like, Board of Health.
I, I agree, and that's something that had jumped out to me from the very onset, because that was one of the first things I noticed in the initial application was the, the amount of waivers being requested, so.
Yeah.
And then, Mr. Chairman, just one more point, if I may. I would just reiterate Mr. Ellison's comment number seven, requesting concept plans for the signage. So if we're doing a checklist for the applicant, I would include that on Mr. Ellison's point number seven.
You might be authorizing them to put up a billboard there.
No, thank you. But thank you.
All right. Continuing down the list here, number ten has to do with the Board of Health rules and regs. We did ask for the specific requirements for that, which we just talked about. Number eleven, Sewell Street and Nelson Street are private ways. I think they've already indicated that they're looking into or finalizing the title documentation for that, so that'll be discussed at a further meeting. Comment twelve is related to adding more detail to the plans, labeling the existing roads, the width of the drive aisles, accessible walkways, parking space dimensions, building lengths and widths. Some of this information is included. We would expect to see if more detailed plans on the final plans that they provide. And also, TEC's opinion on the, that the eleven by seventeen plans are not easy for us to, to read. It's hard to get a understanding of the full development of the site on such a small plan, so we would request that the future plans be provided at full size.
I totally agree.
Okay. Thirteen, to provide snow removal plan. These were provided in some areas on the, the revised sheets. I think there were some areas between buildings two and three that, that still should include snow storage areas. Fourteen and fifteen, again, talk about Sewell Street and Nelson Street as private Sixteen and seventeen has to talk, has to do with coordination with the fire department. I understand there's been some type of communication between the applicant and the fire department. Has to do with, you know, access around the buildings and the location of fire hydrants, location and quantity of fire hydrants.
I definitely want to hear more about that.
Eighteen has to do with a school, school bus pickup, which was addressed, added on both sides of the street on Salem Street, adjacent to the side driveway. Nineteen, grading and drainage plan clearly showing the elevations of catch basin, manhole rims and inverts. This has to do also with number twenty as well. We expect to, to see a full detailed stormwater report that meets the state standards in the Mass Stormwater Handbook. The applicant did complete test pits, based on my coordination with them, and the full stormwater report and plans is, is coming soon, so.
Can I get clarification on that?
Sure.
Are you going to get the, the stormwater report before final plans, before we close the public hearing?
Yeah, now that we've, the basics are kind of fallen into place, building location, ways, rods, that's, that's next big step for us on the [inaudible]. Instead of, is to get you, get graded, yeah. We don't expect that to be confirmed.
Great, okay.
Twenty-one, demarcation of the limit of grading and limit of work line. So this would show basically where the limits of the project are on the plan, on all sheets, so we can make sure that they're abiding by that with their plans. Twenty-two, adding a guardrail, there's a pretty long slope, I would call it, on the east side of the driveway up to the, up to the property.
Would you mind showing us on the plan here where, where that is you're talking about?
Yeah, be right.
Thank you.
Their response is that they agree and they intend to add it to the plans, so. Number twenty-three might be something that we can talk about, the dead-end parking aisles.
Which are located here and here. This version of the plan does look like they created what we would call a hammerhead turnaround at the end of the drive aisles, provides some kind of turnaround potential if all of these spaces are full and a motorist comes in to the drive aisle, how do they go? So the hammerhead, it does look like this plan shows the hammerhead, which is a decent option, I would say. You know, a small cul-de-sac can be a better way to do that, and sometimes you can tie that in with an entrance to the building to provide an area for loading and drop off and moving. People are moving in out of these buildings, so. That's kind of just a more efficient.
Yeah, that's a concern of mine, too. Moving trucks and flow of traffic, loading.
Twenty-four is to provide a complete parking table that summarizes what's required by the zoning bylaw and then what is provided and where they are on the plan.
And could we ask, ask for clarification on that as well, where it says final site plans will incorporate a parking table? Does that mean prior to closing the hearing as well, when you say final site plans for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go on, can I, throw one comment, an item number twenty-three, last time we talked about a claw pack on the end, so we created that situation. I just don't think that translated on our plan, we were too suggestive last time, which we agreed was a good idea, to kind of make a hammerhead to take that area on either side and to save the claw pack, but if somebody did come down, there would always be a place to turn him back out.
The last two spots.
So, yeah.
Yes.
Which I, yeah, yeah. Right, so we, we had discussed that, I just, it just didn't get translated to plan, so.
So which is it? You're going to cross hatch or you're going to do the hammerhead?
Yeah, it was a claw pack shit like we discussed, which was a suggestion by text at our last meeting, we agreed with that suggestion, it just didn't get onto this particular set of plans, we apologize.
Twenty-five, show all the proposed parking spaces. This had to do with the, the spaces under the buildings. It's hard to review the site in total if they're not shown on the plan, so. I have seen the architectural plans that do show the layout in the building, so I will review those closer and provide comments going forward on those. Twenty-six, designated locations for the dumpsters and provide feasible access for pickup and drop off. This one, I understand that a centralized dumpster system is proposed. There's no, I guess, there's no real standard for this in civil engineering, but my personal opinion is that a centralized dumpster is not great. Lived in a building complex similar to this one with a centralized dumpster, and what happened was, a lot of the residents would just take their trash and put it right outside of their door in the hallway, which is kind of gross. And, you know, trash leaks, smells, stuff like that. In the winter, it can be, you know, tough when you, you have to go down four sites, four flights of stairs to bring the trash, and then you have to walk around two buildings to get to the dumpster. So, maybe adding some additional dumpsters would be a good idea.
Yeah, I agree, because I think what happens is, is people are like, oh, well, I don't have time to go to the dumpster now, so I'll just put it in the hallway, and I'll do it when I go down to my car, which might be tomorrow.
Just, just to be honest, Dan, I, I have to manage today, seven hundred units, it was, we have centralized dumpsters in every community, and we have long hallways, and never, ever has anybody ever left baggage outside the door. It is so restricting the lease, that that sets huge fines associated with it, that that doesn't happen. So I appreciate the understanding, and that's part of the apartment living, and that most people have no issue with it. And on top of that, we put cameras facing the dumpsters, so if somebody brings something illegal to it, as a mattress as an example, we have it, almost all cases identify the car, the person, and require them to come and move according to what the law requires, and not at the dumpster. So I, I, I differ, and I could show you examples upon examples of why it functions and works well. So, if, you know, if I can provide something else to help you all, it really is not an issue for Class A apartment complex as proposed. But I have an opinion.
I'm shocked. I have one, too.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
Twenty-seven, adequate street signage and pavement markings. Again, I think they did provide more detail on the eleven by seventeen sheets, but it's hard to understand and grasp for the full sight, so we'd expect to see that on the, on the revised plans. Twenty-eight has to do with the water connections. Sounds like they are willing to loop the water to Up Sewell and then back down Nelson, which is in line with what the water department is looking for. And twenty-nine has to do with the sewer connection, which it sounds like they would be providing a pretty good benefit to nearby residents, so it's good to see that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I do, I wanted to let you get through your responses first, but I definitely have questions. Again, I'm shocked, right? So, I have a big question for the applicant. Has to do with fire department and the size of your buildings.
Okay.
So, obviously, this has been brought up many times at this point. You have buildings that are way too tall, right, for the fire department that they can currently reach you.
I don't know. I'm, I'm, I don't know. I'm sixty-five feet from the. I'm sixty-five feet from the, from the backside of the building. I, myself, fifty-four feet from the front door to the mean level of the roof. I don't, my opinion, personal opinion, I don't have any data or facts, I don't know what the fire department requires, but I know they don't make thousand-foot ladders for the Hancock, so I don't, I don't, can they get to every balcony with that ladder truck? I believe they can't, but I don't know if that, I'm not an expert, so.
Well, I, I definitely remember the fire.
I don't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 I was just saying, I know that the fire.
Seventy foot, I think they have, Bill, they have a seventy foot ladder, it's not going to reach.
Okay.
Because you're going to be twenty feet or more away from the building, and there has to be pitch on the ladder.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't think that that ladder is inadequate.
The backside of the buildings are going to be the tallest, so the fronts are going to, you know, it's only going to be forty-two feet maybe to the balcony in the front.
It might make it on one side, but the backside's not going to make it.
The backside's going to be tall, but I don't, you know, I think I know where you're going with this.
Well, this is the white elephant, the big elephant in the room that nobody's talking about, because it's come up on every, it came up when the fire department was here.
Yeah.
It came up on every single peer review that we've done. So my question to you as the applicant is, obviously, you've heard the concerns, so what are your ideas? What are your engineer's ideas, somebody's ideas, as to how that can be addressed? Because I, consciously, I have trouble saying that people can live sixty-five feet up, but know that we can't get to them if there's ever a problem there. I just, physically, safety-wise, I just can't consciously do it, knowing that we're going to hopefully use this in town as sort of a step down, so you may have elderly folks who are living there, and if you put them sixty-five feet up and you can't get them, that to me is huge.
So.
And that's my biggest stumbling block over this whole project, I will be honest.
I can't speak to, you know, exactly what the law and what the past stuff is with the fire departments and the heights. I don't know what Havel does in eight, nine-story buildings, but I do know that we're going to have stay of the sprinkler system, backup generators for elevators, you know, fire rates, stairwells, all that. You know, I think where you're going is lower in the buildings, maybe?
I, I'm asking, what are your idea? Obviously, you've heard the concerns, we've been talking about it since August, so I'm wondering if you guys have sort of collectively gotten together and figured out?
I have, I mean, I've taken it around.
Have talked about options.
But the, so, looking at it from my perspective with taking out a floor, right, so you can't take the top floor off, because you always need the top floor, so it's one of the middle floors. So let's say it's four stories, you take the third story up, right, now the fourth story is your third story. So with the foundation systems in place, the podium parking, the structural, you know, cost and all that stuff that goes along with them, it's not feasible at that point. When you have that foundation and that intricate roof that's in the architecturals, you know, it's like the difference between a ranch and a cager, right? Same foundation, same roof, it's a lot easier, I mean, a colonial, it's a lot easier, that second floor's a lot cheaper, because you have the, you know, so it's, it gets to be a money standard. Now, you know, I guess we could look at it more to find out exactly where that balcony is, and I think when the architect comes here, he can speak to that. I know they're everywhere, I mean, they were in PBD, PBD lost the whole building, right, a couple of years ago, maybe ten years ago now, right, but there were no, not even an injury, right?
Off the highway, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, and we're going to be a lot more advanced than that, in my opinion. But as far as what the fire department needs, and, you know, I don't, I don't know what's, I know what they like, I don't know what they need.
Well, I'm just sort of putting the question to you, because it's definitely been brought up several times. So I was assuming that you guys have sort of put your heads together and maybe come up with some different options that might work, that might make a four-story building work. Is it, you put, because you're putting in fill anyway, do you bury the parking, do you, you know, there may be other ways to do it.
Well, so we are, yeah, just to touch base on that, so that's, and, so, this is why I went back and forth with the fire department. So with the fire department, they wanted, it's more important to them to have four sides than less height. That's why, this building was the only one that was, that was questionable.
Well, that's a lady on the top floor who can't get out.
No, I'm, no, this, this building was buried before, so.
Can we schedule a time to get the new chief in? And I don't know if there are any other experts in this area that would be able to provide more, less, more of a peer review, as opposed to somebody who's actually in our fire department and them?
Yeah, I'm.
I've talked to Joe in the past on it.
I think that's a great idea, to have a fire chief come in and talk about this, the height, but also from the comment letter, it looks like there are other issues that the applicant needs to address about the access to four sides, which is going to impact the site plan, it's going to impact, it might impact where the building is, the roadways, parking, so I think that's really important.
With all due respect, we did make those changes.
Right, and I saw, and I think that is a lot better.
But we, I made those changes based on, on what they wanted.
First ten minutes are the most important.
Yep.
And, and if you can't reach, you're done.
Well.
With all due respect, sprinklers and everything are wonderful, but every time there's a disaster, it's, it's not just one thing goes wrong, a lot goes wrong, and then it's too late. And mutual aid is not going to bail you out. Mutual aid is too late. So it's, it's got to be accessible to get everybody out.
But I just want the board to remember, I made the change, you had the three sides, they wanted the four sides.
And I think we're getting there.
Yeah, I definitely think we're getting there. I, but because we, it's been brought up several times about the height, I figured you guys might have some ideas and figure out what might work better.
So I think that's fair. We're going to talk to our architect. We have had on tap to get together with the fire department, including the new chief, if necessary, discuss sprinklers, discuss the parameters of mutual aid. My intention, and Paul and I had this discussion at an early meeting, is not to get into what the law says or doesn't say under forty B, which Paul and I and Barbara all know well, we want to satisfy the chief, so that's what we're going to endeavor to do, and we can have that discussion later. I don't want this to devolve into a discussion amongst lawyers on this issue.
No, because I don't think lawyers can make fire decisions, that's why, so.
Right, there is a demonstrable history, is what I'm saying, on the case law, on this exact issue.
Okay.
So I don't want to go there, we want to make your fire chief happy, we're going to try and make him happy. It's like, we understand the limitations of a smaller town's equipment needs, so we want to make sure that we're being incredibly redundant on sprinklers and other means of access to the building, four sides instead of three, and other mechanisms, what we can do. That's our goal, not to have myself, Paul and Barbara argue what the case in Sunderland says. So we want, we want to make him happy.
I'm, I'm just trying to look at it from a practical point of view.
And I know you are, and I think, well, and the civil brought it up to circle it back, because we had this discussion early on, and it's absolutely our intention to have this discussion, now that we've made some changes on the, on where the buildings are and how many sides we can get to, now is the ripe time for us to get together with our architect. If we have to bring in a fire code guy to talk about it more, with more exacting detail, we'll do that, too.
Yeah, I just would like to see either some ideas or a meeting set up with the fire department, so it can be addressed.
We're not pushing back on the discussion of it at all. It's a legitimate concern, we're going to address it to the best of our abilities, and hopefully it's done by and between professionals and not lawyers in suits.
Oh, yeah, I think from our side, we're not looking for anything in particular to address your comment, we're not looking for you to say, take a floor off, we're looking just to, just to see that the overall concern is addressed.
I appreciate that.
Because I think it's a concern we all share, so we just want to make sure it's addressed.
I've had conversations today that this might stop working, but conversations today with the fire sprinkler company and their engineer about the attic spaces, right, they're talking, you know, sometimes that might require a drive system, but there's ways to maybe get that wet in there, which is going to benefit, because it's a trust system, I can insulate differently with spray insulation and keep a wet system in there, which is going to, you know, cut down on a lot of time, so.
Right.
And honestly, I feel like there is an answer to it, and it lies somewhere in the middle. So the question is, well, but that's what I'm asking, that some, you guys have got to put your heads together and figure out a solution to it.
The answer is yes, we would.
I think, yeah.
Yeah. It's somewhere in the middle, but figure it out, because I think you're, that's going to be your biggest stumbling block.
I think what we want to do is.
I think we agree.
Schedule another meeting to, you know, go back over, since the chief was not in place when we had the last covering fire, and just schedule that.
But the acting chief at the time said they couldn't reach it, so I wanted to make sure we addressed it, now that we're talking about several, it was in the report, so let's just get it out in the open. That's a big concern, and put your heads together, because I think there is a solution.
Why I'm still up here, just to touch base on a lot of TEC's comments, Joe, now, I think we're pretty good with the locations of the buildings, whether how tall they are or whatever, but the location of roads, I'm hopeful that, you know, they're pretty much within ten feet or whatever, if they get a slide back and left or right, and then architectural coming soon, whether it's the fourth or the seventeenth, eighteenth, whatever we decide. There's plenty of work to do on drainage till then, like I said, we did the test pits yesterday, we have all that data, so there's plenty to keep us busy till then. But now, I have a good feeling that this is going to be the location of the buildings, we can start getting everything on the plans, the guardrail, the aisle with the handicap ramps, in detail, landscaping, trees, all that will start coming together as an overall site plan.
That's why I wanted to bring this up now.
Yep.
Because if you do make changes based on this height issue, it may affect everything around it. So if you're going to figure that out, I would do it now, and that way, all of this other stuff can be worked out easily, as opposed to trying to do it after, and we have to bring them back in for peer review, which will just cost everybody more money. Except us, because we're free. But everybody else here gets billable hours.
I know. Believe me, I know.
So I have a suggestion. As you know, as yours know, I often have a suggestion. So what you're tasking us to do is several fault. One is strictly on getting a full-size set of plans with greater detail to address most of tech's comments. Our peer review with the holiday can't get that done by the fourth, that's number one. So that, that's reality. If second, you're tasking us to go back and deal and address and look at fire prevention and fire chief and coordination discussions, and that also is not a two-week discussion to take place. So if you'd like us to go back, do homework, I'm just going to then throw out and start to look at the holidays, that we need some additional time so that we can get together again and be more productive together. I, might be something to consider tonight.
I, I don't disagree with that, because I do think, I, in my heart, I believe that if you resolve this issue now, it will save a lot of time later. So I think if you put your, put your thinking caps on and figure it out, I think it will save us a lot of back and forth later on down the road.
Well, I agree, and especially.
I'd rather you do your homework now than later.
Agreed, especially since I believe that in certain areas, we're not anywhere near an approval or denial, but in certain areas, we've made progress, we've talked about sewer extension as a concept and approach, we've talked about sightlines and traffic issues, and they've vetted out through it. So I think we've made a tremendous amount of progress in our time together.
I agree.
I agree with you wholeheartedly that we should go back and, you know, tis the season, it may be a good moment to take a pause.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions on civil review?
I mean, yeah, no question, I think tech addressed most of them, but again, I think we all agree that we just want to start seeing some more specifics as far as, you know, the waivers and that sort of thing, so.
Do you want to forget December and go to the first week, do you know where? We're cool with that, too.
I think that makes a lot more sense.
Given the holidays, but also the volume of stuff to deal with from the tech review, we got to get, we want to get the drainage together, we want to be thoughtful on these fire access issues, we have some other assorted to-do list items. Give us a little bit of time, I think it makes sense to push it to January. I don't know where we are with the deadlines, but if you needed extensions, that's fine, too.
Well, that was going to be my next question, because I, I know it's going to take time, and I understand that these things don't happen overnight, I get it. So, but I am worried about our timeline, so if we are, because we.
We automatically will extend it, if we take December off, it's an automatic one-month extension, it's a timeout.
Can I get that right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll write, we'll write a note.
Yeah, because I just want to make sure that we're not pushing it too close.
I'm in the left. We'd rather get it right with it in council, except in a letter from us stating that we agreed to, you know, then we're perfectly acceptable to that.
What would the extension be?
Well, we'll go, so we'll push it into March, if your hundred eighty days goes to February, we'll push it into March for now, and we'll give other extensions down the road if we're still going over stuff, but I think we should be able to get mostly through by then.
So.
We'll write a letter, and you guys can, suitable for filing with the town clerk.
Okay. What do you guys think about January?
No, I think, I think that's a good idea. I'd rather everyone collect everything and have, like you said, one productive meeting than two kind of halfway productive meetings in January, so.
Yeah, and Jason is not available on the fourth anyhow.
I won't be here, so.
So that might be a good time to, and I think the next one is the eighteenth or something, and I know I wasn't available that day, so I was like, so January might be a good time anyway. I just want to make sure we have the extension. And then, so in January, just to clarify, so I just want to sort of put together an agenda, so to speak, of what we're going to do, so you guys can have the right people here.
Yes, so, the first thing.
Oh, hold on, yeah, I'm sorry.
Going back to the, I, looking at some of the plans that we have, and I don't know how, these are from, looks like February two thousand nineteen. The elevations on here have three stories on the ends of the building.
Correct.
That, just thinking about it, I know sometimes a lot of buildings, we used to work in commercial roofing lots, obviously, a lot of buildings, the way they get around some of the fire access issues is to provide access walkways along the roofs of the buildings, so I don't know, I don't expect you to have an answer to this, but if something like that is a possibility here, where since those lower, those ends are lower, maybe they're, they can provide additional, you know, access walkways across the roof, just something to consider.
Yeah. So to your question of progress, our engineer says that by the eighteenth of the month that he can advance the plans, not for the drainage, but for all other items but drainage. So that can clearly go to tech before the holidays, and they will have some period of time to review those, hopefully for an early meeting in January. We will schedule up in the first, second week, first week of December, as a matter of fact, the architect is happening to be coming to town on his way to Maine on that fourth, so we can maybe schedule a meeting with the fire department on his way up, we could all sit together that first week, and so I believe that we can be productive to discuss ideas regarding resolution concerns about the fire, as well as advancing tech, not, not drainage now, but for other items at our next meeting in the beginning of January. I think that would be a reasonable.
So fire, fire issues we'll discuss?
And close out of the tech outstanding items other than drainage. And that'll include, by the way, our discussion about rights to Nelson and Sewell.
That was going to be my next question.
Yes, yes.
So can we put that on the?
Yes.
Do you, I know your attorney spoke about this prior, so do you think you'd be ready for January to discuss the title?
Absolutely.
And so just to be clear, when we're talking about being ready for January, the first Wednesday in January is New Year's Day.
Yeah, I think it goes, so.
So we're talking the eighth, just so we have a date out there, instead of just January, so.
Whatever you guys want.
That's fine, I just want to make sure a date's called out, for everyone's scheduling and travel plans and, you know.
Absolutely.
You're not available the eighth.
Not sure that matters enough, but.
Of course it matters. Sorry.
We will not have that.
And if that delay means that we're asking, need a forty-day extension, we'll craft that in a letter, whatever, whatever it works out to be, not to put any pressure on the system.
What would you guys prefer it to be?
Whatever date Mr. Haverty is, whatever date is also available.
The fifteenth? What do you guys say?
It's a.
Paul's not available the eighth, but he is available the fifteenth.
Okay.
But I don't know how that, what about you?
It's fine.
I don't have any plans in January, so.
We want to be accommodating on this request, it's absolutely fine.
I could do the first, if you really want to.
I'm not sure legally you can actually.
I'm a volunteer, I can do it.
Oh, I'd hate to see billable hours on a holiday, ooh.
They may not have the heat on in the building, though.
I'll, I'll start with paying quadruple time.
Probably get through the meeting a lot quicker, right?
Yeah.
Well, we get paid double time on holidays, right?
Phil, just give the four of us a mute.
Triple, why not triple?
And honestly, by going, by going to the fifteenth, it allows, if there was a submittal in advance to the meeting, so that somebody needed to review it, it would allow us therefore for time for that to go in after the first and in that regard. So I think it would be very productive, and it'd be fine.
Yeah, I think that would be good, because if TEC's going to get comments, let's say, by the eighteenth, now that puts them up against the holiday, and, you know, people aren't vaca- the 18th, now that puts them up against the holiday, and, you know, people on vacation. And does that work for you guys at TEC, too? Makes it a little bit easier for you, right?
Yeah, and I think we are, we agreed that we've closed out traffic at this point in time, because we don't, I don't know, if, if we need to revisit it later, we could bring them back, but are we okay for the moment to say we're done for traffic for the time being?
I, I think so. We reserve the right to call back if needed, but I think.
No problem. I, I have no problem with that, but.
The only issues left with that are really for TEC, just to rubber stamp the final, so.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
We should have Colin wrapped up, too, by then.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask for one more thing from the applicant, if I may, through the chair? I think the applicant referenced earlier a letter, two or three-page letter that he thought the board might find confusing, but I, I just met this board, but I'm quite sure the board won't be confused by the letter, so I'd like to ask the applicant to provide that letter, and also any permit that you do have from, from natural heritage.
That was part of the original submittal document.
So can we, can we get the two or three-page letter that you referenced earlier?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you're all aware, it'll be from Oxbow Associates when it does arrive. That's what the letter is being referenced.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the only other thing is, not to keep you even longer, Bill, but we, the conservation stuff, going back to that, yeah.
Had three meetings with Concom on the Anrad. Wetland line has been agreed upon, determined. I'm just waiting on the ORAD to file. Let, hopefully have that next week. And possibly do an RDA on, on the Brendel Brook, but more than likely an RDA shortly on the Brook, and then a Nordstrom tent in the future. But Nordstrom tent, it's, it's gonna be a juggling game with the Nordstrom tent, because we can stay out of buffer areas for, you know, up to a year. We won't, I, I don't see a need to go into the 100-foot, into a resource, 100 feet in a resource area within a year. So, and, and, you know, Roman has the, you know, they have a significant extension fee in town for their order conditions, so, and it expires in two or three years. I forget exactly. I think it's three, but, so I, I don't want to get it now and then have it just sit if I don't need it, you know. So I'll, absolutely file a Nordstrom tent, no question about it, but a lot of work can take place before that. I don't anticipate being there a 100-foot buffer zone for at least eight months, six, six, eight months. You know, and I can only work in the majority. This area here, I can only work between November and April. You know, that's natural heritage, so we're gonna try to get a new nesting habitat up here for them, but in the other wetland areas here, but this is 35 feet higher than where I'm at right now. So there's, there's no reason to, to get an order conditions for this back here when I'm so low up here. And to be perfectly honest with you, this building is barely in the 100-foot buffer zone, but graining will definitely be in the buffer zone, so. But like I said, there's no, we'll definitely be doing it. I'm not looking to skirt it. I know it's gonna be required, but there's no point in getting it too soon because I'm, we're so far away. And you guys, you know, if you want to come out, the architect's actually coming tomorrow to visit the site. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but, peer review architect has come to visit the site, and, and you guys are more than welcome to just call me or Rebecca and Owen, I can get you guys out there if you want to get a better understanding of things that's taking, taking shape out there. But that's the deal with Concom. So we have the Anrad, the wetland lines, and they're all surveyed, stamped, submitted, and approved at the last meeting.
It's gonna fall. It'll be fine.
Well.
I don't have anything else. Anybody else?
I have nothing else.
I'm good.
I'd like to make a motion to, to continue until January 15th?
18th.
15th?
15th.
15th.
Better show up on the right day. I'll second.
All those in favor?
You know, it's scary to say that you're gonna be the first people I'm gonna say it to. Happy holidays to your family and happy New Year.
Likewise.
Likewise.
Me, too. Thank you very much. Enjoyed Disneyland.
I have a 12-year-old who is absolutely livid that we are going to Disneyland.
Why?
Wants to stay home and play video games on this weekend.
Go to Universal.
We're going to Universal, too.
My son has been on that date, and he was like, really loved.
Universal. Is that an extra copy?
Universal. That's where it's at, for the older boys.
Good to see you. So you're just doing the next, you know, the best.
No, we're just doing this.
Not really. Just walked through the, through some of the civil stuff, I think. One of their, TEC walked through theirs.
Thank you.
That was like, basically just a review again.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. I'm filling in for Amy.
Of course. I'll do, I'll debrief her.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. That's why I'm like, I can't go on anymore. I can't do this.
Well, what I don't want is, I don't want them putting words in the fire and saying, hey, this is what the fire chief said. I want that to get them.
No, I totally agree with you.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't want to discuss it too much without having that opinion.
And said that, that's why I was like, okay.
Yeah. But that was a different fire chief. Well, that was the interim fire chief. So what the latest one has said. Well, I think that's gonna be a full meeting in and of itself.
I'm better, I swear to God.
I wanted to get out there because I can't seem to get past that.
Barbara?
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 Something. Barbara, something? Lost the minutes.
Agenda. Here we go. Right in front of me.
I lost the minutes.
From last time?
Oh, she gave us the night. Oh, there, there. This one?
Did you get the minutes from last minute meeting? Well, yeah, I did notice something, to be honest, on the minutes from last time. It said that I made a motion, and I would have loved to have made a motion, but I wasn't here.
That's probably.
I seconded the motion.
That's.
And I, I was there in spirit. What? You also said I seconded a motion on line 72.
That's what I was laughing about. It's like, I was here in spirit.
I was here in spirit. That's it. It's neither here nor there. Appreciate that. I'm not gonna lie, that night I was not thinking about you guys.
Line 79. No, that's where it is, so if you're looking for it.
All honesty, after five minutes went by, we stopped thinking about you.
First 10 minutes. Where's Chris? Is Chris coming? What's going on?
I've been there twice, but, three times. Wow, I made a bunch of motions. 71, 72, 76, 88. Wow, I was all over the place, but, see, I'm that good. I don't even need to be here. Yeah, I apologize again for that, for the lack of notice. I, I woke up the next morning like, shit.
Apologize to me. You're the one that has to watch it on YouTube.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was a, I was pretty sick all week, so. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Any other issues with the minutes?
No, I'm just double checking it. I'll make a motion to.
Wait for John, or should we just say, assume that the three of them?
Oh, we have a quorum, okay.
Unless somebody doesn't want to approve the minutes, I think we're good.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 6, 2019. With the, as amended. Right, with the edits.
I can do it correctly.
All those in favor?
Aye. Open discussion? Don't all talk at once?
Again, just apologize for the last, for the last meeting. Me.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:32. Did I get that right? 9:32?
That clock is correct, yes.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
John's gonna stay the rest of the night. He wasn't here for the closing.
He wasn't what?
Said he wasn't here to close the meeting, so he's gonna stay.